And that's what we're going to conquer, get accomplished today. Eric, do we all have a copy of the proposed use agreement for the board to look at? It's just our standard and we have to fill in the information?
Exactly.
Okay, got it. Well, this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to, so for just the rules of order here, I'm going to entertain a motion. Then we'll discuss after the motion's been made and seconded and all of that. Then we'll enter into conversation about filling in the blanks on this use agreement. So I would entertain a motion to enter an agreement with USSA and the City of Lawrence at this time.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, scratch that.
We need to discuss before we start in.
Yeah, I'll say.
Yeah. The discussion is this here. We need to discuss the timeframe that USSA is going to be out at our, that currently they're using two fields, Christensen and the senior field. Is that correct, Eric?
My knowledge, yeah. I know they use the senior field. Is that true, Kevin? Are they using anything besides the senior field and Christensen?
You know, I believe they're also using Jacobs. Will, can you speak to that?
Yes, Jacobs, the senior field, field one, which is Jacobs, field two, which is Christensen, field three, commons. Field seven, which is Corb. Corb will not be used on a regular basis. That's an overfill diamond.
Okay, so we're looking at, on a regular basis, three, but in totality, the use of four fields, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that all at Lee Road?
Yes, ma'am.
They're using one, two, three, and a senior field, and then seven sometimes?
Yeah, yes.
Correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so it's four, four fields plus one sometimes.
And Jeff, I'm not sure if you know, but it doesn't look like Mr. Deckers on the call line.
Right, I got a screen here, so it's us. And we'll make a point of that. We are chatting with folks from Fall Creek Baseball Softball League, the individual representing USSA. It's not on the conversation. I just want to make that a point of clarity out there. So we're looking at the use of the fields. To be clear here, we're looking at then five fields being used?
Off and on, yes.
Okay, and we won't debate how, I just want to make sure everything in the agreement. So we're looking at, coming to agreement, use of five fields, okay? Additionally, here, we're charged with, we are going to, we are looking at a use per field, a charge per field, per game of $100. And that is in paragraph three, which reads in our standard use agreement, reads licensee's use, licensee potentially, is USSA group is subject to the payment of a total fee of $100 per field, per game payable July 6, 2020, and August 3, 2020. We are looking at that.
Standard agreement.
Also, in the standard agreement, USSA is charging and collecting a fee, an admission fee only, for folks attending baseball competitions that's held out there. And that's in paragraph 10, that currently reads, shall not charge admission or fee to the public without the prior written consent of the board, licensee, that's sentence. We need to enter into agreement currently, USSA is charging a $5 per person to attend baseball competitions only. And they are splitting that revenue evenly with Fall Creek Little League. And of course, if we were to agree to that admission cost, City of Lawrence will demand a total account of that till, I think on a regular basis. I think it should be after every use of, because they're playing currently week to week. City of Lawrence will want to know an account of that till collected by USSA after each use. Additionally, in paragraph 15, states that the licensee will maintain insurance. And currently, right now, last weekend, USSA had just an event insurance. Is that correct, Mr. Eric?
Yes, just for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
And we will be, yes, there it is, 6/26, 6/28. We will be needing the appropriate amount of insurance liability limits of $300,000, just paragraph 15. And additionally, USSA will need to provide to the City of Lawrence their future schedule of use of said fields. That's why we're going through up to August 2nd. And we also need detail use that USSA had prior to the agreement that was entered into with the city in Fall Creek. I do believe that it went back to the 1st of June, so.
June 12th, actually, Jeff.
June 12th, okay, got it. Thank you, sir. So rehashing it here, is we're looking at $100 per field, per game payable in two payments. They're playing currently on five fields at varying degree, approving a entrance fee of $5 per person for baseball only at the park, which is shared evenly with Fall Creek Baseball and Softball, and the proof of insurance to the city.
And we had, I'd asked the board to think about the, with regards to the payment, the admission, if they can place a sign stating for baseball viewing only, that the park is still open for other amenities. And so, put that onus on the USSA to have signage specifically saying the park is open to the general public.
Right, good point. So paragraph 10 would read, would change approval to charge $5 to be split evenly with Fall Creek Baseball Softball with appropriate signage indicating admission fee is for baseball only, not for recreational use in the park.
So if I drive in on a day with a tournament and I say, I'm not going to be at the baseball game.
Correct.
I'm allowed to come in.
Correct. All right, I.
And that would, the signage would make it clear to anybody who's coming in to use those facilities for that.
Yes, and I think that needs to, yes, be readily displayed, not where you just walk right out, stumble right up on it.
Or you'll just be charged admission and you'll just pay your admission or leave.
Right.
Probably needs to be in two places, one out by the road, so people see all the cars and they think something, you know, that they can't get in, and then where they're charging.
Collecting the money, correct.
It needs to be two, so there needs to be two signs.
Okay, folks, I've thrown it out there, discussion. I'm opening it up to the board and my friend from Fall Creek Baseball Softball, Eric, I've thrown it out there for discussion. And the issue I guess we're having, and Fall Creek folks chime, feel free to chime in, without an official, and maybe if you're charged to speak for them, without having an official USSA voice there, feel free to chime in. But we are looking, because it's a third party, we are looking to collect a use fee for the city, since a third party is operating tournaments out there. And I'll be honest, it's a pretty good deal, what they're getting now, and even with the imposing, imposing $100 fee, it's still a pretty good deal for folks to use that out there. So colleagues, if you have questions, even of our Fall Creek folks, or thinking out loud, Fall Creek folks?
Yeah, you know, well, I just want to say a couple of things. The UTRIP representative is having some difficulty with the technology, he's trying to log on to the meeting. So I just resent him the link, hopefully he will be here soon. I had a couple of things I did want to talk about. So one was the report of the gate fee after each use.
Yes.
So they're typically, in tournaments, they're typically multi-day tournaments. There may be a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Wouldn't it be possible for us to give a, a report at the end of the week that details those previous days?
Oh, yes, that's where, I'm sorry if I went unclear. That's what I would say, if it's a three-day, two-day tournament, oh, yeah, if you finish up on Sunday, I think an appropriate deadline, 4 o'clock Monday, oh, no, 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 I would not, I don't see, yeah, I'm not going to overburden this thing here. Yes, I would like to see an accounting of the weekend's activity by close of business on Monday. Yeah, not immediate, yeah, that's, no offense, nobody's going to be around a Parks office or wherever to hear you on Friday night.
Would it not, would it not benefit just of the, the dates that you've specified for payment? Did something come in with the payment?
Do you think, colleagues?
Maybe two times, or, or tournament dates, it doesn't matter.
Are the tournaments going to go on every weekend and every, are they through the week too? How many there are?
Will, Kevin, right now, I guess that's the next big, and I actually think that's a bigger question I have, the amount, time of usage that's going to occur for those tournaments, the regularity of those tournaments. Currently, are they, I know it's on website, but are they, right now, just a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or the potential for other days?
No, there is potential for other days. It could be a Monday, Tuesday tournament, it could, it could be a one-day tournament such on a Wednesday, and then the weekend tournament, which typically starts on a Friday and runs through Sunday.
Right. Do you guys?
It just, I'm sorry, it just depends on the number of teams that have signed up for the tournaments.
That's what I thought. So right now, does Fall Creek Baseball Softball have, and you're right, it's tentative. Do you guys have a tentative schedule that runs up through the end of tournament season right now?
As far as rec or the tournament schedule?
No, no, I'm just talking with, tournaments that USSA is putting on out at Lee Road Park there, do you have a, do you have a schedule, do they have a schedule with you right now?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
It's on their website as well.
Okay, and that would be my next question, the website one is accurate, correct?
Yes.
Okay, got it. That's important to know. Can I ask any other questions? And I know we're kind of holding out for our, our third party.
Yeah, I'm going to give him a call in a second if he's on.
Yes. Adam, can you hear us? Hello, Adam?
Looks like he's still connecting.
Okay. Well, city.
Mr. President, the other thing that we.
Please.
And I.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
I'm not sure this goes in the agreement, because it's kind of temporary, but the COVID-19.
See, that was on my thing to think, and that was on my to-do list here.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, you know, that was on my to-do list.
Yeah, it was.
I fumbled it.
You put it in here.
Yes.
I saw that.
Thank you, guys. Adam, can you hear us now, sir?
He needs to unmute. He needs to unmute.
Adam, can you hear us? Is he, are you on mute, Adam?
I think he's on mute.
Might be muted.
Such a terrible word.
Adam, can you unmute yourself? There's a mute button on the bottom left-hand corner of the screen. If you click on that shit on mute.
God, I'd be glad when we can just be in the same room and blah, blah, at each other.
Third, third time's the charm.
Yeah.
Adam, can you check to see if you're muted? There's a mute button on the far left-hand side of the, you know, Adam, I'm going to call you on the phone, just hang on one second.
Yeah, we're good. It's all, it is what it is. Take a great big deep breath. You know, what's everybody doing over the long weekend?
What are we doing?
Yeah, what are we doing fun, anything?
No.
It'll be hot.
I played a couple of studio sessions.
I was going to ask you, that's where I was going, that's.
I played a couple of studio sessions this week, and it felt good to be back at work wearing a mask.
Good. Good.
Did you include the COVID-19?
We're getting ready to do that, and I, duh, I dud it.
Yeah.
Mr. Burns brought it to my attention that the COVID-19 processes need to be on file.
Jeff, does the $100 that we're asking per game from here on, or does it go back to the ones they've already played?
It's retro, because it, the agreement we're entering is from June 1 through August 2nd, so yes, ma'am. I'll wait till they connect, Kevin's on the phone there.
Is Lee Road Park the only park that's having baseball tournaments right now?
Yeah, OYO is practicing, but they're not, it's all in-house.
Okay.
All in-house teams.
Okay.
You know, I'm sorry, I just got back on. Was there some other discussion going on?
Yeah, hey, Kevin, real quick, sir, just for our information, will USSA be done with tournament hosting out there at the end of July, or they continue into August?
You know, I'm not certain. Let's see if Will can answer that question. It actually looks like Adam's trying to get back on, and he can also answer.
Because we're looking at, we have the date going up to August 2nd.
Right.
But if they're going to play later, I know most schools around here will be in session by August 3rd.
Mm-hmm.
And I just didn't know if they would continue, and that leads me in, when are you looking to start your fall league activity in-house?
Fall league, I believe is going to start toward, we're going to start it sooner than normal for fall, because we didn't have a spring season.
Correct.
We would like to expand our fall season, so we're going to start, I believe, the last week of July.
Okay. And since I can get to chat with you, I mentioned it last week, and if you could get to Eric, your OYO, geez, your COVID-19 procedures, we have OYO's on file, and I'm making sure all of our youth leagues, it would be soccer, Eric, we need to make sure we get theirs, youth football, just what your procedures are going to be, we'd like to see if we can get those as soon as possible. Virgil at youth football reached out to me yesterday, and I think they're going to have theirs to us by Monday, or if not sooner, Eric, may get those by the end of the week. So if we could have those, so we can have them on file, please?
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
So we are, I'm using some precautions right now. I don't know if they've been solidified into official procedures.
Mm-hmm.
You know, from our last conversation, I thought you were at this point seeking UTRIP's COVID procedures.
Right.
But we can also, of course, provide ours.
Yes, I was going to say, we're going to kind of follow the model of IHSA, or we're following in MSDLT athletics at teams, each individual team had to submit procedures to athletic director, and then it would go to the district level, because every sport's different, you know that.
Sure, no, naturally, we will get those to Eric.
Mr. Decker, can you hear me, sir? Hello, hello?
It looks like he can hear us, but we cannot hear him.
I will call him and then just.
You want me to talk, I'll talk to, you can talk to him, I'll talk to you, and you relay it.
He can just talk into the mic.
Yeah. Yeah.
So while Eric is saying it up, let me ask you a question, Jeff, to make sure I understand this. So the, the work that UTRIP has done at our park, and they anticipate continuing to do, will that count in lieu of a direct payment to the city?
From Fall Creek?
No, for UTRIP.
No.
Well, not, okay.
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Decker, can, this is Jeff S., president of the Parks Board. I don't know if you have been able to follow any of the conversation that we've had so far. Is that true?
I mean, I've been in and out, so all I've heard is about your COVID.
Okay, well, I'll just go back and, bear with me, everybody, I will go back and just rehash what we are proposing in a use agreement between USSA and the City of Lawrence for use of the facility. We are tentatively looking at the dates, use of your organization between June 1 and at least August 2. And on the issue of monies, there's two items that we are proposing. One is a fee of $100 per field, per game payable on the 6th of July, 3rd of August. And the, currently, right now, because we need to have it in the agreement, we, the board has to approve the admission fee, which right now is $5, which under our understanding is currently being split evenly with Fall Creek Baseball Softball. And we would need a couple of signs, a little more pronounced, indicating that the fee is for baseball admission only and not admission into the park. Also, the proof of insurance needs to be unfiled per city agreement that we have for all the organizations, and to have unfilled what your COVID-19 procedures would be. If I missed something, guys, chime in. And that's where we're.
Did you say proof of insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So that's where we're at right now.
I understand, you know, sort of, I guess, I never entered into agreement with the City of Lawrence. That was my first mistake, apparently. I didn't realize that I had to. I entered into agreement with Fall Creek to upgrade their fields, which we have done to some degree with my labor and my money. We built four new, very nice mounds for them that cost roughly $1,700 apiece out of my pocket. I am uninterested in paying anything else to anyone, so if that is the case, that I'm going to be charged to pay anything, I'm not, I will just pull out of Fall Creek. And I understand that that's not what everybody wants to hear, but that's just the business part of it.
I understand, I understand your, I understand your commitment from your own finances. The city end of it, which I understand, the city is still, we're still responsible, Eric, right now for, what services are we still providing right now, basically at no cost to the participants, am I correct?
Yes.
Which is, what are we providing out there right now?
Field maintenance, mowing, trash pickup, utilities at the, for the concession stand restrooms, supplies, so ongoing costs that we.
Okay.
Still have. And then, of course, our insurance and other things that the city has to carry on the facility.
Okay. Colleagues, questions here?
Jeff, let me add something. I hope I'm not overstepping myself by not giving others a chance to talk right away.
Oh, no, 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 that's why you're on board here. Open discussion.
So, one of the things that I think Will and I would definitely agree on is that the, the work that's been done by UTRIP has been substantial. It's work that we have truly needed and we could not afford, and so we definitely benefited from that in a way that is lasting. And so I'm wondering if we can come to some kind of compromise in terms of the value that UTRIP has put into the park, be it their work, be it their improvements to the field, if that can't be considered as an offset to the, to the actual dollar cost we're looking for them, for UTRIP to contribute.
And if somebody can help me walk through here, A, do we have any type of A fixed dollar value of what that is? And I guess, second of all, we're, the City of Lawrence Park system is unique to, because of our structure, Unigov fees and all of that. I know their charging of what they charge teams to play at Fall Creek is substantially less in some cases than where they're playing at other locations, and.
Can you give us a comparison?
Well, I know, I'll go big here, I know out at Grand Park, it's well north of $500 a team, it's $389. On the website, it indicates highest fee for the oldest group, which is $389, and I think the eight use, correct me if I'm wrong, was $198. And I know you're playing at Center Grove and at Moore'sville, and jump in, I know they're playing up at Cicero, and I know those fees are at least.
Not to interrupt you, but just to clarify some things.
Yes, please, that's why.
There's several USSA directors in the state of Indiana.
Right, right, I saw that, yeah.
My company is just, my company is Ultimate Tournament Series, and I used to run USSA tournaments for 14 U and underage groups.
Uh-huh.
So I, I'm just using the USSA system. I'm not actually, you keep referring to USSA, it's actually Ultimate Tournament Series. I don't know if that makes sense, but my two venues basically are Fall Creek and Cicero, okay?
Makes sense, now that makes sense, okay.
Part of, part of the deal with Fall Creek was that I did not charge any of their travel teams to participate in these tournaments, whether their age group was in Cicero or in Fall Creek. So their, their travel program has saved thousands and thousands of dollars by entering into this agreement and not having to pay the registration fee to enter these tournaments.
Well, then, that begs my next question. Keep hearing that they entered into an agreement, was that a written agreement or a gentleman's agreement?
It was just a verbal agreement between me and Chris Arkenow, who is the travel commissioner for the Fall Creek Little League, or, sorry, Fall Creek Baseball and Softball, baseball commissioner.
Right, I, okay. So what, and this now complicates it more, because now we're in essence dealing with a, and it's, you know, the issue being here, it's, a fourth party has been officially entered into, though it's under the umbrella of USSA baseball, it's, the tournaments are actually being scheduled and arranged through Mr. Decker's company. And I.
Just to clarify, maybe if I didn't clarify it, like, so like, every USSA tournament in the United States is actually not ran by USSA, the organization, it is ran by independent tournament directors. I guess that's where the disconnection may be here. USSA is just a construct of similar rules and teams that certify themselves under it. There's not an actual, it's a governing body, more than, it's like the NCAA.
Right, right.
It's like, Indiana would be hosting their own basketball games, but they're part of the NCAA umbrella. So Ultimate Tournament Series is hosting baseball games under the USSA sanctioning umbrella.
Okay.
So if I understand correctly, Fall Creek went into an agreement with UTRIP, with Mr. Decker?
With Mr. Decker.
With Mr. Decker.
Yes.
Engaged, engaged in agreement with him.
Correct.
Based on using our fields and the improvement of our fields without our knowledge.
Correct.
That's not totally correct, because prior to UTRIP games starting, Will and myself did talk with Eric Martin about this, and we thought this process was moving along at some point before COVID occurred. So that's prior to any UTRIP games.
Mr. President, did we previously discuss this at one of our meetings? Then we, there was no agreement reached at that meeting.
Back, what was that, February?
February meeting.
The February meeting, when we were discussing the agreement with Fall Creek Baseball and Softball, it was contingent, because it was brought to our attention at that time, that they were going to have tournaments out there, and the, and the organization mentioned to us was UAAA.
Right.
That was the group that was brought to us, and not Mr. Decker's organization, and that's where it, until three weeks. that's where it, until three weeks ago. Is that about the right timeline, Eric? And I think, and I'll be honest, not to belabor, I'm not going to belabor the point here. I, in good conscience, overseeing the goodwill of the city, the citizens, I, in good conscience, cannot come out in support of tournaments continuing out at Fall Creek Baseball Softball, and any of my colleagues want to talk me off the ledge on that, feel fine. Originally, we did think that we were going to be, because the use agreement does say between the City of Lawrence and United States Specialty Sports Association.
Yeah, so we're.
And apparently, that's not who we should have been in conversations with, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll be honest, I cannot, in good faith, continue sanctioning activity out at Fall Creek Baseball Softball outside of our Fall Creek Baseball Softball rec league and whatever travel activity within occurs. If anyone disagrees, it's open for discussion.
Our agreements with Fall Creek Baseball and Softball, and that, has that agreement been signed?
It hasn't, you, you voted in principle, though.
Because I'm, I'm concerned that it wasn't signed in the first, the first agreement.
It wasn't, no. Jeff signed it at the February meeting, and thoughts that, that Fall Creek would sign it, and.
Right.
And that's when we met on March 13, that Kevin just mentioned, and that's when they brought the tournament information to us, and then I mentioned it in your, in the March meeting of the Parks Board.
I'm, I'm concerned that the agreement has never, ever been signed.
Is it ready to be signed?
It is, I mean, you, in essence, you, that's what you voted on, you motioned last week at your third, writing meeting.
Okay.
Let's enter in with Fall Creek.
Got it.
Baseball Softball for the remainder of this year.
Getting back to the item that Jermaine, at this time, is my recommendation to this board.
And then regardless of the, regardless of the agreement, I had tried on several occasions to get by the office to sign that, we need to find the office. And then when I finally reached Eric, he said that he could meet me at the park sometime to sign that, and that's, that's what's been a difficult thing to do.
Got it, understand.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept that.
Yes, I'll accept that. Everybody knows what page we're on. For the immediate item here, it is my recommendation that we, well, I'll go ahead and make, make the motion then. I would entertain a motion that we, well, we don't even have, it's not an agreement with USSA we would be entering into at all.
Jeff, will we consider making that agreement with Adam Decker's team instead?
I'm going to be honest. I'm going to be honest right now. I'm going to say no. It's, the trans, and I'm not blaming anyone, it's a weird world we're involved here, and it's going to sound like I'm pointing fingers, I'm not, I'm just being honest. It's a weird world that we're into. We knew nothing about USSA. Obviously, Mr. Decker, I think his heart's in the right place, it's baseball and a business, and I understand that, but our fiduciary duty to the City of Lawrence and its residents is, we have a fourth party now, that we're just now finding out about who is putting those tournaments on, and I understand him not wanting to incur additional costs, he's a businessman, I respect him, he's putting his neck on the line, his money on the line. But on the other hand, we, this Parks Department, it still is providing services currently right now that aren't being covered, and we're unique, but believe me, a city our size, we have a very small budget when you look at cities our size with a park system. I do not feel comfortable as a appointed representative entering into a fourth-party agreement at this time. I just don't. Fall Creek's welcome to have rec league, they're welcome to host tournaments, but having, the way this has transpired, I don't feel comfortable signing off on an agreement with a third, or a fourth party to host tournaments at one of our facilities. And if anyone on the board or folks comment, feel free.
Well, I would agree, we don't want to set a precedent where there's no fee per, per game.
Right.
Or per use of the fields.
And like I said, if Fall Creek wants to host their own in-house tournaments, travel leagues, whatever, they're free to do so, which they are, but at this time, there is no, I do not see a path forward entering into an agreement with Mr. Decker. And with that in mind, we would still, I don't know how we address this area, but there have been admissions fees collected that we need an accounting for from all parties concerned. Am I correct?
Yes.
So we would need an accounting of those fees collected, which we've already discussed already, and it may cause a, I feel bad it caused a disruption to our Fall Creek kids that are supposed to be out there, but this board is not comfortable entering into an agreement at this time with a fourth party. And I think the parties together, we need the accounting of the monies that have been collected. I think that needs to be forwarded to the Parks Office, and Joe, Mr. Murphy, you can correct me if that needs to go there, to the controller's office, you can advise Eric on that, how the fees have been collected and how they've been dispersed, but at this time, there's not even a motion to vote on here, because it was to enter into agreement with.
We made a motion, do we need to just table it?
Yeah, or we can pull.
I move to table the motion.
Okay.
Well, we haven't, we haven't made a motion yet, and the tournaments have been ongoing.
Right.
So, without any kind of discussion or arrangement or contract, so we need to make it maybe clear with a motion that.
That's a good point.
That's not feasible.
So.
Well, we need, we need to make a motion to direct the parties to make the financial situation transparent.
And the collection of fees?
Right.
Okay, so first, we have two motions, one is to table the original discussion, there's one motion. Someone?
I move that.
Okay, there was a second.
Second.
All those in favor of tabling our initial discussion, which was to enter into agreement with USSA, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the second one is, we need a motion on both parties, Mr. Decker's group, and I'm sorry, I did not catch the name, Mr. Decker of your organization, I apologize, but a reckoning between.
It was Ultimate Tournament Series.
Ultimate.
Tournament Series.
Got it, thank you, sir. A reckoning between Ultimate Tournament Series, Fall Creek Baseball Softball League, a reckoning of fees collected, dispersal of fees, a reckoning of that needs to be filed with the City of Lawrence Parks Office within the next seven business days. I'm going to be very specific.
And Jeff, who does that go to exactly? Is that to Eric Martin?
Joe, Mr. Murphy, Eric, I'm not sure. The reckoning here, the money, fees collected, the, okay, how are they going to do?
That's my attention, then we'll determine.
Okay. Attention, Eric.
Information after that, now how they want that dispersed, or if they want it.
Okay. All right, so there's your motion on the reckoning. Do I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the reckoning, the reckoning of parties, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, at this time, that will conclude this special meeting unless there is any additional comments from the public. My friends at Fall Creek, let's get ready for fall season. I would certainly welcome back Mr. Decker's, your organization in the future where we could work directly with you, and I understand how tournament folks put them on, you do provide a service. With that being said, I would make a motion that we adjourn our special meeting.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.